... one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Basil is not here tonight, and Mr. Kurtz is not here tonight, so Mrs. Bytes is the acting secretary. Mrs. Bytes, would you call the roll, please?
Yes. Mr. Basil? Mrs. Bytes, present. Mr. Doughty?
Present.
Mr. Kurtz? Uh, Mr. Rathgab?
Here.
Mr. Speed?
Here.
Ms. Todorski?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Here.
Mr. Martino?
Here. Now, under announcements, we are having an executive session immediately following this meeting to discuss some negotiation items. And having said that, Mrs. Torrance, any updates?
Thank you, Mr. Martino. I only have a few this evening. I just would like to give everyone an update on the girls' softball team. They fought hard last Thursday night, I'm sorry, Wednesday night at the county championship, but they came up short on winning that game. The girls have nothing to be ashamed of at all. They went 21-1 and are moving into the district playoff games, which will be tomorrow night at Muhlenberg. I also would like to give a special thank you to Mr. Huheer, Huair, for the donation of four $25 gift certificates to Michael's Diner. These gift certificates were given to the guest alumni speakers that presented during the high school talent assembly. So, special thank you to Mr. Huair. That is all that I have this evening, except we have some presentations to make to students in a little bit.
In fact, I wanted to say about the youth girls' softball championship, two runs scored in the first inning. Add to those two runs not scored, we'd probably still be there watching a 0-0 game because it was nothing but shutouts. Every inning after that was a heck of a game. Any more presentations?
No more. No. Do you want to do that? Finish?
The procedures for the public participation are on the inside of the blue cover of the agenda. Are there any presentations by the public on any agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to recognitions for May.
Yeah, because it was too much. So, they're not leaving. They're just going down.
All right, we'll make it easier on the kids tonight.
Can you hear me now? Uh, we would like to recognize the BCTC student of the quarter. And the quarter that we're recognizing first is second quarter recipients. And we have Angelica Andrews for cosmetology. Next, Tyler Black for electrical occupations. Julia Gentti, cosmetology. Ashley LaSalle, occupational child development. And Judith Swenda, IT networking. Good job. And next, we have BCTC student of the quarter, and this is the third quarter. We have Tristan Cause, protective services. Ryan Kinder, culinary arts. Next, we have Shannon Martin for cosmetology. And Monica Mayby for dental occupations. Next, we would like to recognize Jake Croft. Jake was a part of a team that won district competition for Skills USA. His team then won the Pennsylvania State Championship. It was a teamwork competition. Jake was our plumber. Also, won the team our a mason, an electrician, and a building construction student. The BCTC East team will compete in the Skills USA National Competition, which takes place in Kansas City at the end of June. So, congratulations to Jake. Are you here? And next, we have students who have competed in different, well, different areas of their shops and at BCTC. We have Sarah Ething, culinary arts, third place, bronze winner. Next, we have Keenan Sumner, a bronze winner for culinary arts. Next, we have Kayla Schaefer, bronze winner, culinary arts, pastry art, and cake decorating. No Coates, who is a silver medal winner, medical health professions, creative problem solving. Ashley LaSalle, silver winner, occupational child development, focused on children. Kimberly Mathias, second place, or silver winner, culinary arts, pastry arts, and baking. And last, but first place, our gold member, gold winner, Tristan Cause, protective services, EMP team. That is our, those are our.
Next item on the agenda is the consent items. And the consent agenda tonight includes 8A through 8P for the board members. Are there any items on the consent agenda you would like voted on separately? Seeing none, Mrs. Bytes, you want to do a voice vote? Motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Wolf.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Radowski.
This will be in a unanimous roll call vote unless I hear votes to the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes.
Next, the presentation is by board members. Is there any secretary correspondence, Mrs. Bytes?
No.
None as their BCIU. Seeing none, a BCT, uh, BCTC report?
Uh, we actually will be meeting next week, so we haven't had a meeting recently.
Okay, thank you. Uh, student government report. Mrs. May, is there a report from the student government?
There should be, yes.
Hello, I'm Cody Mitchell, student government president. I have with me my treasured head of flags. Since we are the students of the school, we would just like to give a report of all the activities the school has been doing right now.
Thanks.
To start it off, we had another great Mr. Boone show this year. We had 14 participants, and they all put a lot of hard work and dedication for the show. We have been in a college club which has a recycling program, and they say the place will significantly enhance the money fundraising, so the maintenance does not have to put the paper together and get rid of it. DBYA, they held four blood drives. At the first three, they had 765 registered donors, and then the last one, 117. And then they also hold SUC, which is a performance for the elementary students. And all the money they raised, which they raised were $5,000, they gave to the family of Olivia Blair, who does have cancer. Drum Club held together Broadway at noon, which introduces younger elementary students to theater, which did have 60 participants this year. And they show all the way from acting backstage to technical from lights and sound. They will also be going on the New York trip in a few weeks where they get to be introduced to Broadway members and get to see a Broadway show. Senior Class, they have been putting renovations together to the student union from P to P theaters and tutoring rooms. Relay this year, which ended this weekend, by the end of the year, they, or end of the day, they raised $8,250. But the relay season is not over. It does end on the 31st, so they do have time to raise their goal of $105,000. Sorry, before I, I'd like to give honorable mention for all the hard work you put in this year, and you could be co-chair for the event next year, 2015. Fellowship Christian Students, they have run a drive for, they would like to create blankets so they could donate to them. And we have five participants on the track, and that are going to head to states after they qualify in districts this weekend. And that's David Schmidt, Kenneth Burlington, Adam Myers, Steph T. First, and Alexine Cora. And then, we had Interact Club, and they participated in P A Beautiful, where they went through First Road to help, you know, trash and help improvement anywhere they can. And they partnered up with the Rotary Club to do that. And they also did a senior citizen lunch, and where they had a senior citizen that felt they wanted to come. And lastly, we are still working for our Marquis public.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
There's no legislative report. The legislators, legislature is in recess and will not resume, so they're set until June 2nd. Are there any other reports? Seeing none, we're going to Building and Grounds. Is there any Building and Grounds report?
Nothing.
Nothing? Financial approvals? Personal approvals? Moving right along, program approvals? Uh, is there a motion to approve the Daniel Boone High School music students, the Amsterdam Theater, paid for by the students?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Wolf, second by Ms. Radowski.
This will be a unanimous roll call vote unless I hear votes to the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you, Mrs. Bytes. Policy, there's no policy committee updates. Transportation, no updates. All businesses, there a motion to approve the agreement with Frontline Technologies for Automated Subservice and Employee Time Record System, otherwise known as ASOC.
Motion to approve 16A.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Speed. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Bytes?
This will be a unanimous roll call vote unless I hear votes to the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes.
Any new business? Seeing none under new business, I would just like to remind everyone, we are having a finance committee meeting at 6:45 on Thursday evening at the, in the district office library.
Cafeteria.
In the district office cafeteria. And following that, there will be a special voting meeting on the preliminary 2014-15 budget.
Are both things going to be over there, or are we holding? We're not going to do it?
Both things are there. The one will immediately follow the other.
There's a concert.
Any other comments or questions by the board members? Any presentations by the public on any issues? Seeing none, aha. Brian Nowicka, 365 Bristol Drive.
I have a question. If you, when, right now, Basic Skills is on the cutting block for the budget, correct?
As of right now, yes.
Yes. What are we going to do with those kids? And how many kids are affected by basic reading and basic math?
It would only be the math students that would be affected by it, and I don't mean only lightly. I do not have an exact number of students that we are giving assistance to for that, for that group. But it would be all students K to five in all three buildings.
So, what's the alternate plan?
At this time, the alternate plan that I would recommend to the building principals would be the same plan that I had ready to put in place last year. And that would be to look to our teachers who work with our learning support students, who are highly qualified to teach both regular and special education, and lean on them a bit to make sure that we have that assistance in a pull-out type of program. We would have to, we would have to regroup. We would have to think about what we're really going to do at this point.
So, what you're saying is, is you're going to put more kids on the teachers, and the kids in basic math. So, we're talking the bottom-tier kids. We're going to cut the bottom, we're going to cut the program of the bottom-tier kids, and hopefully that the teachers will be able to rally the kids from the bottom line.
Mr. Nowicka, we don't have a pull-out program for the basic skills students anymore, so the students are integrated into the classroom this year. So, if you are a basic skills student in the 2012-2013 school year, it looks much different than what it does this year. What we have done with those math interventionists, we renamed the math program and put them as more of an interventionist, where they're doing small groups, they're supporting the students within their math class. We have the bottom, our lowest, our most struggling math students working in, I know for a fact, at Amity Elementary, they're working with two teachers in the classroom, and the numbers are lower. So, we've already put some things in place that are different than the way that the program looked, but those students would not be getting the additional support, yes. That's how it would look, unfortunately, if that's, if that program would be cut.
That seems important.
I don't disagree.
Mr. Martino, I also wanted to tell you that I read your article that you sent out to your people. It was very impressive. I can't believe that you would send out something that has something to do with, that you can't believe that we would have to raise taxes in this. I can't even believe you can still walk up here and sit behind that microphone and have a president in front of your name. It's a shame that you're so concerned about your personal and the 20 other people in the school district that are worried about raising taxes, because it would be horrible. I could see, when I drive by your house every couple months, you are really struggling, and it hurts me to think that you couldn't afford to pay for the taxes, I mean, in a 3,000-square-foot house for two people. I'm sorry you're struggling so hard, Mr. Martino. Hopefully, you can make things.
Mr. Nowicka, let me answer you. Let me respond, because I've been sitting up here like a punching bag for a couple months. I'm a little tired.
Well, then stop right there. Stop.
No, I don't need to talk. Now, let me answer you.
Go ahead. There's not an answer.
When I ran for the school board, I was the co-chair of the Daniel Boone Taxpayer Act. That was not a secret. I ran on a platform of controlling taxes, and I was elected, not by 20 people, by several hundred people. There are a lot of people in this school district that don't want taxes raised. As a private citizen, I am entitled to champion not raising taxes. There are nine members on this board. Depending on how the other eight members vote will determine whether taxes are raised or not. So, no, I am not ashamed of my email, my message, or not wanting to raise taxes. Thank you. Okay.
I would just like to say that I prefer we kept the comments from being, like, personal. Can we restrict that to emails and stuff instead of at a public meeting like that? Just a request. Thank you. Thank you. I was just saying, Mr. Nowicka, I wish that we could refrain from personal comments at the public meeting, that we could just stick to the agenda and general statements. We could always shoot around emails and letters after the meeting, if you don't mind.
Sure, I'd love to.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Torrance, would questions follow up on Basic Skills, with the realignment? Will that dynamic change? Will anything be different about what's this year versus what's going to go into?
No. The idea was that if Basic Skills would be placed back into the budget, that Basic Skills would be in each of the buildings. The only difference would be, I am planning to write the Title I grant this year to include math, which we would be able to then defer some costs that would have normally come from the general fund to pay for the math program there. We will be able to defer that to that pot of money.
What type of, what type of money are you talking about?
I have Mr. Small working on that. Roughly about $100,000 for that salary, with its benefits. Yep.
Mrs. Torrance, what is, what is the total cost of that Basic Skills program?
It's four, it includes a teacher that supports students at the middle schools well, and the three teachers at, or, I'm sorry, the, yes. Then we have Amity, Monocacy, and Birdsboro positions. So, it's four altogether. And I know I did ask Mr. Small to...
I think I might have a thing.
Do you?
I have $328,520. Does that sound about right? So, 329.
Yes, sir.
When she, my 364 Bristol Drive, today have you heard the Senate news that Justin McCann is resigning as the band teacher for the high school?
We just received the resignation today.
Everyone's concerned about that. And I thank you.
Sir, may I interrupt you for one second? The rest of the board wasn't even aware that we just received the letter today, and it hasn't been circulated amongst the board yet. But thank you.
I found a great article. I don't know if you've heard this guy, Dr. Otto. Just wanted to read some wisdom from him. He said, "We have believed for more than 100 years in this country that heaven is strong. Extracurricular is what makes a solid American education, " he said. "We built a whole child, not just their math and reading skills." So, I'd say I'm an advocate for keeping the elementary band. And last meeting, you said that you had, I think, $300,000 excess in a certain fund. I was wondering if that could be used for, for the band expenses, as well as the math skills for the children.
Sir, if I understood it, we are currently $300,000 under budget in expenses. We don't have an excess. Thursday night, the board will discuss the entire budget, all the numbers, what we have, what we don't have, what we're going to spend, what we need to cut, what we don't need to cut. So, right now, I don't know where that $300,000 actually is, or it's going.
Definitely all right. 239 Mile Lacunes. I was coming here ready to ask a similar question to Mr. Basil, who's not here. However, he mentioned the $300,000 under expenses, and I understand that you're saying you're going to talk about that on Thursday. My question for you is, why are those two things, the two that were discussed tonight, elementary band and Basic Skills, not even in the budget, not even part of it to be cut later? Like, it wasn't even a consideration. You had already made your mind. You weren't even putting in the budget to work out, and now we're $300,000 under in expenses, and it's not even slated to be basically considered, because it's not on there. Why is that?
You're so right. The preliminary budget that we actually have, that we're going to be amending Thursday night, was put together, was formulated back in the fall by the former administration, Dr. Otto, the former business manager, there were two acting business managers at the time, and the former board, half of which is no longer here. And there were all kinds of things cut from the budget and a maximum tax increase put in, and none of that has been resolved to anyone of their satisfaction at this point in time. So, what will stay and what will go will be decided, for the most part, Thursday night. It can be changed at the last meeting in June, but Thursday night, a preliminary budget will be presented to the public. A final vote will be taken 30 days after that.
It's all right. Let's expand on that a little bit. In years past, how the budget process worked was, the board would basically balance the budget. And two years ago, we came to the administration and said, "We would like you to come to us with a balanced budget." And then, what it was, we started what doesn't work was, when they, whatever the kindergarten is out, extra, you've been through the process. So, as the budget developed, you know, we would make decisions of what to put back, and then how to offset that cost with fund balance or taxes, you know, using some other means. And that, the fundamental approach of how we got to that budget had changed. So, that's like, it started out out of the budget, and then things were put back.
Oh, exactly. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we applied and made that maximum tax increase, and then I just wanted to make sure that we weren't leaving these things out, so we didn't have to utilize that. It's just a concern. Thank you.
Mr. Martino, I want to just add, just, just for people, to try to break it down on a level, I think, more of like household budgeting, the equivalent of $300,000 to the school, if you made $50,000 a year, it's the equivalent of $300. So, if you're trying to make your budget in January, and in October, you find out that you have $300 more than you thought you were going to have, because, I don't know, maybe you clipped coupons, and you bought stuff on sale, whatever. That's the equivalent. So, we're trying eight months out to come up with a budget for expenses that we are set, dead-set on for a year. So, for example, if in January, you had to decide exactly how much you were going to spend on food for the year, and you couldn't have a penny more, that's what we're trying to deal with. It's not, it sounds like a lot of money, but in the grand scheme of breaking it down, it's really not that much money.
And may I just clarify, too? It's really just an entry on paper. It's not found money. Or, maybe Mr. Small could talk to that?
Well...
When you're over budget, it's a month-to-month thing. Next month, you might be under budget. Could you comment on exactly what that means?
And what was funny, right?
You can look at it as, we took fund balance last year to help balance a budget. At the end of this year, it's like us using 300-some-odd thousand less than what we budgeted to take out fund balance.
It's using your savings account to pay your mortgage and finding out you don't really have to, at the, you know, or you don't have to take out as much as you thought.
But we still have three or four more months in this cycle that that number will vary month to month, right?
No, the cycle ends June 30th.
Just a little over a month.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Can I just add one thing, Mr. Martino?
Yes.
And in light of...
And light up tomorrow being a voting day.
Yes.
You know, because, you know, over the past couple months, we have seen some folks come up and, as you say, use you as a punching bag. You know, you and I obviously don't agree on everything, but you are, you were elected, and the folks who voted for you, I think, like you said, you were up front. People know exactly what, you know, what you're running for. So, I understand the surprise. And you were voted in, and quite frankly, this, we're not alone with this country. The voting turnout was invisible at that last election. I'm sure tomorrow will be no change. So, you know, folks, if you want to make a change, you got to get out there. That's all I got to say. No reason to hammer Mr. Martino. He is, was lucky to do what he's doing, so.
Thank you. Seeing no other public comment, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
To adjourn.